Planning Commission meeting to order. We will begin with a swearing in of two new members.
So you two would stand up, please, and raise your right hand, and when I get to the part where it says "I", you can say your name on the note, okay?
You brought cookies, right?
Frank Coss, Jeremy Grantz.
Being first duly sworn upon oath, say.
You repeat that.
You have to repeat that. Being first duly sworn.
Being first duly sworn.
Upon oath, say.
Upon oath, say.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and partially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the planning commissioner.
The planning commissioner.
For the city of Kaiser.
The city of Kaiser.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To the term of my office.
Term of my office.
Congratulations. Please each sign all of them, and I'll take them back.
I'd like to welcome you two gentlemen to the commission.
Thank you.
And now, this is my favorite part, we're going to have an election of a new chair and vice chair. Mr. Callier, sir.
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Matt Lawyer for the position of Chair, and Crystal Wilson for the position of Vice Chair. And I'd like to move that the nominations be closed.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And the train has left the station.
That's because I wasn't talking, Nate. Have a good time.
Congratulations, Matt.
I'll let you finish this one up if you'd like. No, you're good.
Simple as that.
All right.
Down to business, sir.
Here we go.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, insert question mark. So we have the minutes that were forwarded from Debbie. If there's any questions, if not, we'll entertain a motion.
I move that the minutes of our September meeting be approved.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mark and seconded by Jeff, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We got two abstentions from. Frank Grantz and Jeremy.
Commissioner.
Hostler.
Hostler.
Thank you. All right. Motion passed. Next order of business, we have appearance of interested citizens, Debbie, do you have anybody signed up tonight?
Nope.
All right. Moving on to number six, we have the discussion continued from the November 11th planning commission meeting, discussing the results of the buildable lands inventory and housing needs analysis. Do we need to?
Well, just for the viewing audience, we'll just summarize where we are, why we're, what we're doing tonight. Want me to go ahead?
So, can I, Chair, can I just jump in? I just want to make sure when everyone speaks, since we have new council or commissioners, that you're speaking into your microphone, because we still have had some complaints that they can't hear, like during council and committee meetings. So please don't sit back and, you know, like, sit back. You need to, you know, don't eat your mic, but you need to make sure you're speaking in the mic so everyone can hear, because these are being broadcasted, so I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Good reminder. Thank you, Councilman.
So some of us have voices that we actually need to eat the mic.
It's quiet.
I'm apparently, yeah, whatever. Okay, at the last meeting, we discussed the housing strategies that are contained in our buildable lands inventory housing needs analysis study that has been recently completed. We cannot adopt that study because we are showing deficits and we currently have not identified how those deficits are going to be addressed. But contained in that report is this list of strategies that was identified through that process. And there are a total of four separate strategies with a few different sub-points to those strategies. We discussed at the last meeting how to encourage a broader mix of housing types. That's strategy number two. We also discussed strategy number three, identify strategies to support affordable housing. And strategy number four, evaluate funding tools to support residential development. All of those were evaluated and discussed by you as the planning commission last month. And it was, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I've, how I heard your discussion about it is that you understood those strategies, you agreed that those were viable strategies in that we have a lot of work to do to evaluate them and to find out which particular avenue would be appropriate for our community. Is that a fair statement? Okay. What we, what we chose not to do at last month's meeting was to discuss strategy one, provide an adequate and available land supply of land for residential use. Action 1.2 would be to evaluate opportunities to increase allowable residential densities. It was noted that this simply increases the density potential. It will not be a complete remedy and property owners will still be in charge of what they do with their individual property. Discussion followed regarding efficiency measures, the state mandate to provide for growth, planning options and constraints, legislation, affordable housing concerns, and the effect of House Bill 2001 on this plan, the available land and the boundaries determination, management of flood plains. That was a heck of a long sentence. Basically, so we, we've got to evaluate the opportunities to allow additional residential densities within our land supply. Commissioner, oh shoot, you know what? I'm like, wait a minute, this is not making sense. So at that, at that point, at that point, Commissioner Duran noted, because it was his last week, Commissioner Duran noted that citizens seem to want to keep Kaiser the same and increasing density will change Kaiser. The intent of his thoughts were that we like Kaiser, we are proud of Kaiser, it is a good community to be with, and basically, the citizens are not very supportive of changing the underlying fabric of Kaiser. So his preference would be to expand the UGB rather than increasing density within the current UGB.
This is, we haven't talked about yet.
Right, and so, I'm sorry for that. Basically, option one is to expand Kaiser's portion of the UGB to meet Kaiser's 20-year needs. This option is complicated and would require multiple steps. The first step would be for each city to establish its own UGB. Then there's a discussion, and I am quoting from the BLI HNA and the executive summary, which you have, was in your packet last. Eugene Springfield provide the only relevant example their process required actions by the Oregon Legislature. Once Kaiser has its own UGB, it would need to proceed with a complicated and expensive process of documenting land need, conducting an analysis of the suitability of lands adjacent to its UGB, not the portions adjacent to Salem. And then it goes on, with respect to land need, PSU does not currently provide a population forecast for Kaiser. The first population forecast that was done by PSU simply took the combined UGB and did a total number. Now, what we did for the study is we took the previously agreed-upon split of the population at the time we did our previous regional buildable lands inventory housing needs analysis. That was 15.7% in Kaiser and 84.3%.
The rest.
And Salem. So we, we simply extrapolated that same split that was done in that, because that was a negotiated split and agreed-upon split. We simply used that number for this current split of assumption for what our population forecast would be. Now, it is. Let me, let me go ahead and finish this. So it requires that PSU update forecasts on a three-year cycle. Marion County forecasts were last repaired in 2017. Under the cycle, new forecasts will be produced in 2020. But since they are regulated, it will not be until the fall of 2020. And so, we, there's a lot of discussion that will occur in the process of developing a Kaiser-specific number. The good news is, we will get a Kaiser-specific number. The bad news is, we're not sure all the things, all the factors that it will be. In the previous one that was done, in our previous BLI HNA that was done, basically, there were some creative things that were done in that process. Some of, for example, Polk County's unincorporated growth, population growth was basically thrown into the mix so that Kaiser could account for a more robust population projection. That will not happen again when PSU was, because this is, this is no longer subject to negotiation, basically.
And that's because state statute changed a few years ago. It used to be that regionally, what was required by the state to manage urban growth boundaries was a regionally coordinated population projection. And so, we were regionally coordinating that through the Salem, Kaiser, Marion and Polk County, and it was basically the group figured out how that population allocation was going to happen. And the state changed the rules, it says now you have to use PSU's methodology and form for creating population numbers. So we don't know, we, we assume that our number will probably be a little less than what this HNA and BLI imagined, because they were using a historical kind of reference point. But it may not be, it could be depending on what their metric is that they use. And so, the hard part is, is we don't exactly know where that will land.
Stay tuned for more excitement in the future. Note that the state has a priority scheme for UGB expansions that places agricultural lands in the last priority. Kaiser is surrounded by prime agricultural lands. This option would take at least two years after Salem-Kaiser split the UGB and would have a high likelihood of protracted and expensive legal challenge. And when we say expensive, we are talking in terms of M-expensives. So basically, option one is, we can get a divorce, and in so doing, we have all the studies and all of the costs that go through that, with that process. It also puts us on the hook for absolutely meeting all of our land supply needs. We are constrained, we have exception lands to the north, which prime agricultural is the last on the priority, and exception lands are the absolute first on the priority. We have, and by exception lands, basically are lands within the county that have been zoned as residential. So we have residential agricultural lands to our north that extend all the way up to the Brook Lake Road. Anyway, so it's a long and protracted process. We would be on the hook for all of our land needs, including residential, commercial, high-density residential, all of those things. That, right now, in the BLI HNA, it's anticipated that just the housing needs alone are 500 acres. So, that is option one. Option two, use established, use the established Salem-Kaiser urban growth boundary to meet Kaiser's 20-year needs. And what this would entail is working with Salem, identifying how these land needs would be met. But the bottom line is, it would be an evaluation of what we can accommodate in our boundary, including things like the revitalization program, plan that we just simply adopted, which in and of itself, according to the gap analysis, could create up to 2,500 units, housing units alone, just within that core overlay district. Now, that's, we did not take all of the measures that that identified, so that number is somewhere less than that. But, so option two would be to simply understand the boundaries of that urban growth boundary and what, what we can do within it, and utilize that in many ways to accomplish the goals and objectives that the city of Kaiser chooses to pursue. And option three then would be kind of a combination between option one and two. This option would likely, depending on the specifics of how it is structured, involve some or all of the complexities of option one. Meaning, we still have to do the studies, we still have to do the legal challenges, we still have to do all the work that it would take to get a divorce, basically. So I do want to, just one other sidebar that I did want to throw out there for your understanding. Employment lands are kind of a different animal than what we're talking about here. In our last adopted opportunities analysis and housing needs analysis buildable lands inventory, we had an aspirational goal of 67 acres of employment lands as an expansion to the UGB. It's governed by different rules than the same things that we're talking about, our residential lands. So I would submit to you that that is still on the table and is still something that could be pursued and would fall into a different process than the structure that what you see in the BLI HNA. Mr. Chair. Thank you. Nate, when you say employment land, is that industrial and manufacturing? They just put it under one? Right. Okay. That's correct. Thank you. We identified five target industries. The last one was sports facilities, medical office, back office operations such as accounting and.
Educational, I think.
And educational facilities. I know, we keep, we keep going through the list and we leave one off and it's like, ah, whatever. Anyway, so those were identified as potential employment lands. And it is still adopted and is still very much in play.
And I think one thing of, of special note that we, you know, and it's kind of a weird one, because this, well, last month and this month, it's not really an action item where you're making a motion and doing a vote. It's not, we're not changing text. But one of the things that strategy document really laid out in there, which, you know, I mean, I know it's been a month, but hopefully, when you guys all looked through it, you kind of consumed it and said, okay, I get why they're bringing this to us. With these strategies specifically, you know, for, for us as staff, we want to know what resonates with our planning commission as we're developing our work program for next year and what kind of text amendments to bring when it comes to efficiency measures and additional density. But the other thing that happened, which was really unique in this, in this housing needs analysis and buildable lands inventory, is the citizen advisory committee that met through the process, you know, we did this project over the course of, I think it was four meetings over six months. It was really fast, because we were under a major time crunch. But they actually made a motion in the midst of adopting the plan and approving it that literally said, we want to pursue option two. And that's to not expand the urban growth boundary for meeting our housing needs, but rather to look at the other ways of accommodating the housing needs within the existing growth boundary. And they actually made that as a formal recommendation, which, which was sort of unique, frankly. And one of the things that Bob Parker and Echo kind of wrote in this report was that as we look at these strategies document, specifically on this UGB kind of, well, let's just call it the million-dollar question, we won't call it the $60,000 one, because we know it's not going to be that cheap. But he basically said, it's really important that we go through these strategies and engage the planning commission and then as well, the city council ultimately, to make determinations on how we want to move forward with policies based on these growth-related issues. So that's really why we're here tonight, is to get the planning commission's input on, you know, is this recommendation that the CAC said, is that something that, yes, that resonates and that makes sense? Is it something different? Is it, you know, as Nate pointed out, this is specific to housing needs. It was not an employment opportunities analysis, so, or economic opportunities analysis, which would govern the employment lands, that is a little different animal. And so, there may be some different possibilities for our future, but I think that's, that's really what we want to hear, is if there's questions that you guys have on the study, on where the numbers come from, on how those numbers get derived, and then also a general overall, Nate, correct me if I'm wrong, but basically a general overall consensus as to how planning commission views the policy as a, as a kind of a pseudo-recommendation to take on to the city council level.
So basically, what our task is to do is to go before, and you'll be involved in this process, but to go to council and have the city adopt an action plan on how we're going to address our deficits. And so, that's what we're trying to set the stage for here with this discussion and your recommendation on the evaluation of these housing policies, because these will be the basis of what we put into that action plan.
One of the considerations in a divorce is, right now, a lot of the services are done through Salem. If, and the divorce really only is a, is a urban growth boundary issue, so there could still be an IGA and services sort of still left in place the way they are, that has no bearing whatsoever on the UGB discussion, correct?
Sure, that is very much true. For example, the provision of sewer services is a regional service. And a UGB is not going to change that underlying service.
So that's not a, so by saying if there is an urban growth boundary expansion, there's going to be millions and millions of dollars in infrastructure that have to come in to support that, is not necessarily true until such time that the actual expansion of land and growth and stuff require that, right?
Yeah.
I think yes and no. Mr. Lawyer, I think a part of it is that, and it's hard, I'm not a state statute expert by any stretch of the imagination, but there are some provisions with an urban growth boundary expansion, and Nate, I don't know if you remember the number of years that you're given or not, but I believe with the filing of a boundary amendment, you have to not only say you can serve those lands with infrastructure, but you actually have to build it within a certain amount of time. So you actually have to commit financial resources, one way or the other, to fund it, either through, you know, I mean, general fund dollars or bonds. It can't just be borne by, oh, well, as it develops, it will get built. You have to front-load some of that infrastructure, and that's, that's where it gets, the, the public financing piece, I think, is, is part of the reason that Echo said that, yeah, it's a really expensive and long and drawn-out process. Not just the legal battle that you may face and that historically has been faced in the state of Oregon, but it's also the reality of building those things. Mr. Chair.
Before, before we leave.
Did that, did that answer your question?
Actually, this is part of the same discussion. What I was going to mention is, I, I don't think Marion County, the state of Oregon, or the city of Salem gives Kaiser anything for free. So I don't think that's part of the UGB discussion. If, you know, if we decide to go our own way, we'll have a lot of expenses, more than I had thought of years ago. But, you know, we, we contract with these different groups to provide like traffic signals, services and those kind of things, we're paying for that, we're not going to, not going to lose that.
Right. And the, I don't know, just let me finish this one thought. So it is true that none of those services necessarily would be changed, they may be changed. For example, the provision of, of traffic control services, our, our street lights, our, our stoplights, is something that, that the city of Salem does, and that's under an IGA that we do and we pay for. All of those things don't evaporate because a UGB expansion is had. But at the same token, nor does any, nor does the existing combined UGB have any impact on who we are and our home rule and the land use policies that we create or any of those kinds of things. They have no say in the land use controls that we establish. The only thing that this UGB expansion would change the face of is basically the face of Kaiser and what, what happens on the impact. I will tell you that we are beginning the study today, I'm trying to finish the request for qualifications on the new study that we are doing for, for the impacts of growth on a transportation system. Right now, you've heard us talking about, in the revitalization plan, we identified a major reconstruction of the intersection at Wheatland, McNary Estates Drive, Manzanita, all of that. We don't have the money to reconstruct that intersection. I have applied at SCATS, at the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation System Plan, I have to do the acronym thing. I have applied for funds that will allow us to begin the, the, the plan development process in 2022 was yesterday's proposal from the technical advisory committee. And that is just for the plans, we have no idea exactly how that is going to be built. And currently, we do not have a funding source identified for that. And that is simply to construct what is already in our TSP for our existing growth and development. It has nothing to do with a, a UGB expansion. Now, if there is a UGB expansion, if there is a divorce, and we are on the hook for all of that, you can multiply that by a factor of probably 10 as to how is, how is all of that going to happen. The intent of this new study is to be very specific about what improvements are required and what are the costs that the city of Kaiser would be faced with. That's just kicking off now, but that's going to take six months to go through that process. So, I hope, I finished my thought. Sorry.
Mr. Grantz, you have a question?
I just wanted to, to make a note for the benefit of the commission, piggybacking on what you were asking about. Kaiser is not the only community that Salem provides sanitary sewer, sewer service for. Turner, that they provide sewer and water service for Turner, actually, so it's not unique.
And I think transportation is, and traffic control as well.
I don't know that for sure.
I think so. Well, regardless of a UGB divorce or not, any expansion in the city of Kaiser could demand additional services in that funding piece down the line, so the, okay. Sure. Yes, Mr. Hauser.
Looking at goal number 10 from the state and looking at possibly playing with urban growth boundary adjustments, wouldn't it, we're, we're going down the road of infill. And then, once we do the infill, could we not use those, those, those tax dollars that we get to, to save, to hold off the people who don't want to do the urban growth boundary, but yet know it's going to be coming? To say, okay, we can embrace this financially later on down the road.
I'm not sure I followed the question completely, but if we do additional infill, they will be assessed system development charges, they will be assessed. Obviously, the valuation of the property would be increased. But remember that Kaiser is incorporated with, and it's, I'm repeating what has been told to me, I haven't done the exhaustive study, but the lowest rate, the lowest tax rate of any full-service city in the state of Oregon, Kaiser has been incorporated with, and we do not have the ability to change that because of the legislative process. That new rate applies to anything that is built and it's not just infill, but it's also even if there was a UGB expansion. And that's part of the analysis that needs to happen is what are the costs of increased services for? We don't do fire, but certainly we do police and, and just the process of issuing building permits. It's estimated that we would have to issue, remember how many permits? A staggering number of building permits per month. We could not do that with the size of staff that we have. We, we, it's fine. It's a big number. A number that, that we went, really? And so obviously there'd be a whole list of kind, code enforcement. You're not going to be able to do, right now, we are spreading that butter pretty thin on the bread as far as code enforcement in response. All of those kinds of things are additional requirements. And does it work out? Is, is the analysis prove that that's sustainable? That's not the purpose of what we're doing here tonight. We're just trying to say, if we get a divorce, be prepared for some major expenses. That's really the bottom line of what, what we're talking about here.
Commissioner Whelan and Commissioner Kellier.
Thank you. If we pursue a separate UGB for Kaiser itself, separate from Salem, has, have we engaged our state elected officials? You know, because they went through this with Eugene Springfield and that's one methodology that might save the citizens of our community, probably millions of dollars and maybe a decade of time. But I think as we're talking about this, we need to investigate, would they be a resource that we could bring to the council, to bring to the city? And say, could they initiate something with legislative movement like Springfield Eugene did to make it much more time friendly and dollar friendly?
Short answer is yes. The little bit of additional information, honestly, I don't think that, I don't know the, the full ramifications of what that may mean as far as additional studies that would have to be. We certainly would have to do the site suitability process and the exception lands process and all of those kinds of things. So it's not just a magic bullet that, oh, well, we, we are for free kind of thing. I think it's a reality. The bottom line is we are the only city in the state now that has a shared UGB outside the metro, of course. That's a different animal. And, and so, yes, there probably is a legislative fix for what we've, what we could accomplish. But that legislative fix isn't going to fix the real things of what we're talking about here as to what is Kaiser? What is our Kaiser identity? What do we want to pursue? The fact that we border a, a different school district entirely, all of those kinds of things. Our legislator is not going to be able to fix.
Mr. Kellier.
Thank you, Chair. I, I have been vocal about getting a divorce with Salem for a long time. And until I sat here the last few months, getting all this information about this and did a little research and talked to some folks in Springfield, when they got their divorce legislatively, they still had to come up with the money to do all the studies that we just got done doing. That's no small, small number in itself. And that's with the current staff. I don't remember now exactly, but I think Springfield has maybe three times as many staff as we have population. And, and so there's that expense too, whether you're contracting out or, you know, whatever. I thought it was interesting last month when Kyle, Commissioner, was talking about needing to expand to keep Kaiser Kaiser. I have always viewed it quite frankly, the other way. And that is if we expand, we're going to end up with more than one high school in every community I've ever known from Grants Pass, Medford to Beaverton, Hillsborough and on and on and on and on. When you go from one high school to two high schools, you basically split your, split your community in half. I think we saw that some, to a certain extent, when we got a second middle school, quite frankly. So I'm a little concerned about that. What it really comes down to me is I don't think we can keep Kaiser the same way it is today. I don't think that's possible, no matter what we do. The other part is, is we keep talking about the $2.08. Unless this has changed, I don't believe this has, is that residential development, even with, even with the initial development fees, over time do not pay their share of community services. That the services that they absorb, police, fire, sewer, water, on and on and on, are greater than what they generate in revenue. So if we're going to become, my biggest concern is, and the reason I always promoted the UGB divorce was so Kaiser could develop industrial lands and employment lands and, and have a stronger tax base. And because to me, if we're at $2.08, that's not going to pay for it. We're going to do residential development is basically what we're doing or what we're being allowed to do under the current agreement with Salem. It's kind of like if I keep selling hamburgers for 99 cents, but they cost me a dollar 50, eventually I'll make some money. I don't see how that works. So if we continue at $2.08 and we continue to be a bedroom community, how do we continue to exist?
If I, if I heard it right, the employment lands is not held the UGB portion, correct?
It's a different process.
So there is, so there is a process that exists. Because the UGB discussion we're talking about right now is specifically related to our housing needs. But to go along with what Commissioner Kellier is saying, if we were to engage in a process to target those specific needs of the employment and those other tax based operations that would, that would, I think equalize that revenue stream a little bit.
Yeah, but we have to get Salem's permission. Salem controls that.
Well.
And you can say we're on equal footing, but we're not because if you look at the percentages that we have now of those lands, it's far inferior to our, to our population.
And remember, 67 acres is a fraction of something like Mill Creek or, you know. So 67 acres will be a, an accomplishment. And to be sure, that will be a benefit to Kaiser. But it, it is not going to solve our financial issues in providing service. The other thing I wanted to make sure that is underscored is, right now Kaiser has been a darling of the Builders Association, home builders like us. We are, I think it's because of our stellar staff, but it's also a fact that our.
It's your fantasy. You can make it as big as you want.
I'm missing the data for that.
No, the reality, the reality is, is our SDCs are a fraction of what they are in Salem. If we expand the UGB, that is under, it's plain that it will be significantly higher on the magnitude of 10 times higher than the current things that we enjoy. And that's not even to address the things like north is a different fire district than the Kaiser Fire District. It's a different school district. And what are, how do they, are they going to accomplish their financial burdens? All of those kinds of things, it changes the complexion of how we do development in Kaiser in a UGB expansion scenario. So we just need to understand that as a background.
And I think one of the pieces, if I can add on is, you know, one of the pieces that the, the big document, the hundred pager or whatever, the thick one, the Housing Needs Analysis piece dives into a little bit more. Is that housing affordability piece? In the last few legislative sessions, including new legislation that's going into effect with House Bill 2001, which is in some parts making us plan for different types of housing everywhere. But there's also a bunch of language in there that talks about how we are going to, in the future, have to do housing needs analysis and buildable lands inventories. And how we have to accommodate for housing of all needed types and income levels. That's one of the concerns that Echo Northwest points out is that with an expansion, that's not, you're not going to be able to accommodate affordable housing, which you have to plan for with any expansion because you have that need. And the reason we got this study is because we're, we were determined to be a severely rent burdened community. And so that is another piece where that's just another element, I guess, in the decision making process to look at, okay, if those lands that expand are all going to be, you know, whatever, I'm, I'm a forever Kaiser kid. Like I, I grew up here. I've been here forever. And like, the reality is, is there's a certain income level in Kaiser that generally we have. And those expansion areas, based on the numbers that have been kind of spit out by people smarter than me, it sounds to me like that's probably an expansion for people that are not maybe within this market for housing. Because of how big those SDC fees are going to have to be and what your profit margins are going to have to be for builders and developers. Unless there's some significant subsidies from somewhere that can help offset that to make housing more affordable. And working for the government for a long time at City of Kaiser, we don't, I don't think, we could ask him, our finance director, but I don't think there's like any big magical buckets of money anywhere.
I, I think he's hiding something.
So, and so I do think that's another piece is that we haven't talked about a lot tonight, but that's one of the other things that has changed a little bit over time. And especially in the last five years is the interest and requirement for cities and communities to be responsible in planning for that housing affordability piece. So, and I mean, actually, Councilman Freeman could probably speak way smarter than me about this. So.
Commissioner Watson and Commissioner Hustler.
Okay, so just first to check for understanding, the impression that I'm getting for the divorce proposal is that it would be a, we, we wouldn't really be setting ourselves up for success if we just went ahead with that. Sort of like jumping out of the plane while we're still looking for our parachute. And if, is, is that the general impression that I'm supposed to be getting? That, yeah, we could do this, but we're, you know, you open that door and there's a whole lot of stuff that just comes tumbling out at you for cost, for infrastructure, timelines that you have to commit to be able to meet, whether you have the resources to do so or not.
Yeah. I mean, I think I would characterize, at least from my opinion.
I mean, I know you're not trying to actively give your opinion to us and discourage us from anything.
Because I definitely don't, we're not, I don't think we're trying to advocate for any one position.
Right.
But what we do want to make sure, or at least what I want to make sure that we're understanding is that it's not as simple as just get a divorce and all of our problems are solved. One of the things that, you know, the legislative option that was in Springfield and Eugene, you know, we actually got a, a, a white paper, if you will, from DLCD on what would be a pathway forward if we wanted to kind of have a little more control of our destiny.
Five easy steps to a divorce.
Yeah. And, and I think the, the reality is, is that it does put us on the hook for some things that it might be, well, we, we've had some different discussions with people at the LCD, people at Thousand Friends, and kind of we've heard over and over, be careful what you wish for. And so I think that's the, the fear is that there's not, there is not a set in stone, this is how you do it. And if you do it this way, it's going to happen, right? There's too many moving parts with any kind of boundary amendments.
Okay.
But yeah, I think, I think, Mr. Watson, that we definitely want to say, hey, divorce is something that even the most amicable divorces, there's going to be collateral damage. And so that's, we're, we're saying caution is definitely important.
Then I, then I guess my, my second question, and I'm, I'm going big picture here and I'm asking for your opinion on this. If we, provided we go with option two, where we just meet our needs within the existing boundary, is the planning commission and city council of 20 years from now going to be cursing us or thanking us? Because it's, it really comes down.
Yes, they will.
They're going to be doing both.
So.
It, it almost comes down to that for me because I, I would agree that in general, I'm in favor of Kaiser handling its own destiny and being divorced, but understanding that that is not a five year proposal. And it's certainly not something that you just decide on and move forward with. If it's something that we need to take 10 or 15 years to plan towards and to gather finances and opinions towards, then that's a reasonable thing to say, you know what? In a couple of decades, that is what our plan is going to be. But it doesn't seem reasonable to make it a, the first priority. Whereas instead we could take option two, I think what Commissioner Hustler was getting at was within that time, with the infill that we're talking about, redesign our, our base, redesign the fees in a way that, that gets us saving towards an eventual goal of being able to divorce. But I think I'm putting words in people's mouth when I say that. And I want to make sure that I'm not choosing the option that's easy for us now because it's easy for us now. I want to make sure that if that's the option we're choosing, I want to choose it because it's going to be making life better when we actually, if we actually do decide that we want to move forward with that.
If I can just respond to that thought, it's spot on. And the things in 20 years, there's going to be a different world that we have. First of all, Salem will be out of their land. And when we are expanding the UGB, then by all means, we need to expand it appropriately. Simply because we are saying your option is to expand it now or not is just make sure that we understand that that now word is what we're talking about is.
It's not never or do it.
It's not never or do it. That's, that's important to keep in mind. And you know, what, what's the market going to be in 20 years? We don't know that. We, I don't have. Well, we don't know what the economy is going to be in 20 years. We don't know what it's going to be in five years. We don't know what the political environment is going to be in the future. We know that right now there is a frenzy to densify and to take local control out of the hands of the locals, et cetera, et cetera. I may have some opinions on that, but regardless, is the, the current legislative process is dictating that we do certain things. And those are having results on what is our future land needs going to be. So I would stress that what we're talking about is the now part. Under the conditions and the, the combined UGB, we have enough land supply. We're told that. I was just this afternoon down in Salem when they're doing their large project to re-envision their comprehensive plan. And they're trying to establish where do they want their growth to be within the UGB. And we were joking because on their map, the only thing in Kaiser, it just said draft. And I'm like, is that, maybe I'm fine with that really as far as when you do your, yeah, what? So we joked about.
So they didn't have any ideas either?
Yeah, no, and they, I would have stopped them short if they had ideas. So. The reality is what we're, what we're dealing with here is, and I know 20 years sounds like a long time, but we're dealing with our immediate future. Because 20 years is not forever. And heavens, even in 10 years, the world may be different and we would revisit and reestablish. So I just want to make sure that when we, when we talk about these plans of actions, this is for now.
And I think very specifically, it's how do we address this current document that outlines there's 479 acres approximately needed for accommodating the next 20 years of residential land growth. So I mean, that, that's, yeah, I think that's the, the key element there is in order to address it, Echo kind of gives three options when it talks about having an adequate land supply. Expand it, don't expand it, or a combination. And that's kind of the three options. And they outline kind of the pros and cons. And it, it's obviously an overly simplistic options and a little flippant, but, but the reality is, is that there's, I think it is a difficult piece. And, and I would say, Jeff, like, as far as whether or not planning commissions of the future will be cursing or, or blessing decisions that are made now, I would say that's why it's really important that as we move through the other efficiency measures that are identified, where we're going to see a little more boots on the ground action of development pattern shifting with that infill development with the revitalization plan, that I would just encourage as, as a commission, that you really are considering those elements that we're putting forward and asking those questions and doing your research. Because that, I think, is going to be something that sometimes there's this feel, I think, that, oh, you're going to have this much population. sometimes there's this feel, I think, that, oh, you're going to have this much population, you have to do something about it. And if, if we have that divorce from Salem, that's absolutely true. If we don't and we have a shared boundary, there's a little more flexibility for us to keep Kaiser Kaiser. And we still have to be responsible to plan for different housing types. We still have to pull our weight when it comes to multi, multifamily housing and upzoning and providing more. But you might not have to plan for all of it, which then doesn't make you have to cram 15 pounds in that five-pound bag. So, I mean, I think there's some pros and cons to look at it from, from those perspectives too.
And for example, we just, well, uh, council just barely on Monday, don't want to steal Council Freeman's thunder, but um, they directed the ordinance to be prepared. There were some minor changes that were made to the plan. And the ordinance is coming back to, to establish the River Cherry Overlay District and all of the provisions that you put forward. And I will look anybody in the face in this state and say Kaiser is doing its share. With actions like that, that are significant, they are, um, it is, it is what we feel is responsible and a, a good future for Kaiser. And I will challenge anybody to disagree with me on that. The other, um, so we are in periodic review. We have to go through periodic review every 10 years. Our last periodic review was completed in, we keep.
Well, it got confusing because we didn't think we were done and then all of a sudden we found out we were done. I think it was 2012.
Yes, yeah.
I think, I mean, I think it was 12 that we completed.
And so we're due for another periodic review process in the near future. This is going to be one of the things that we will examine. Now, because it's, it will be fairly fresh at that point. I, I don't imagine it will be, um, that we're gonna, that you're gonna have to do this all over again. But um, my point is, it is not because we adopt a 20-year land supply that this is locked in the vault and this is um carved in stone, brought down from the mountain, whatever. This is a dynamic process and it is not something that will not be constantly evaluated and um assessed as to how appropriate it is. So don't worry too much about those future commissions. That's all I'm trying to say.
Thanks.
Mr. Hustler.
Yes, um, couple of questions, okay? Uh, Shane, you said the CAC had made a recommendation to move forward. What is their timeframe and what would be our reaction to that?
So, yeah, so the CAC, the CAC was specifically for the Housing Needs Now, well, the Housing Needs Analysis Project. So they, in their final meeting, which was in June or April? Mark, May? I know it had to be completed by the end of June, so I can't, I think it was, no, it was May.
It was May.
So their last meeting in May, the CAC basically, for what it's, for what it's worth, they blessed this Housing Needs Analysis document as well as this strategic uh management document. Oh, it may have been June, Nate says. I know it had to be done by the end of June, issued to, or give, turned into DLCD. So whenever that last meeting was, sorry, Nate says June, so it was June. So at that last meeting, the CAC said, yes, we're good with it, we like it. We've made the changes that we wanted to make throughout the process. And on top of that, we're saying specifically, because with this UGB discussion, Echo gave basically three options. They didn't say, this is what you should do. They said, here is ways you can look at this UGB question as a whole. The CAC took it upon themselves to say, we want council to know, we want Planning Commission to know, that we believe the best path forward is this option two, to accommodate growth within the existing UGB and not pursue a boundary amendment at this time.
And part of the process though, just so you know, there's, it's never easy. Part of the process to establish that recommendation in these housing processes, there was a very specific poll that was taken of the large group that was assembled. Some of you were there. And um, it was not unanimous by any way, by any means, as far as the audience saying, which of these three should we pursue? It, it's a complex and hard concept to understand. Particularly when we have such a divergence of things like political ideologies between Salem and our city council. Did I mention the third bridge?
This is on TV, buddy.
You just did.
Strategy five, new bridge.
So that, it tends to be emotional and it tends to, all kinds of things tend to say, oh, wait a minute. You know, forget that, we, that's not us, that's not what we do. But the reality is, that is not us. And um, they can't say that to what, how we, who we are as a community and they, there is that boundary.
And, and I think the other thing I would say, and this is just, this is me just being pretty blunt. Hey, I just had like a surgery yesterday, so if it doesn't make sense, I'm going to play that up as being the issue. But I know, I mean, for Frank and Jeremy, guys, I'm sorry, this is your very first meeting and we're literally asking you a huge, huge question at your first meeting. But I think really to, to speak to your point of, well, what is this mean for timeframe and all of this? There really isn't any implication for a timeframe. There's nothing in the statutes or in the requirements that we necessarily bring this document to Planning Commission. You're not approving it, it's, it's already done. But when we go to actually amend our comprehensive plan, which would then address and adopt numbers to look at that 20-year growth, that's going to be a separate process down the road, which is the one that Nate's saying, we can't actually do yet because we identified this deficit. But really what we want to be able to gather from the Planning Commission is kind of a general feel, vote, consensus.
Direction.
Direction, thank you, Mark. On, on what Planning Commission feels is appropriate as we, because it really is, it's, it's probably, I would say, three parts educational, one part, give us your feedback. Cause it's really, hey, this is what we found from this process. We want you guys to know, this is what's we're facing. And so it, it is something that we want to know that, but I mean, I, I don't know how to say that any better other than, yeah.
It's, you know. You had, you had two questions?
Yes, sir, I did. My second question is, okay, let's look on the other side of the fence, which happens to be farmland. Have we identified what would be a goal of land to bring into the urban growth boundary?
No, we have not identified, we are prohibited from identifying until we go through the process. But we have looked across the, the fence and we do know that those exception lands exist. We know how many acres of exception lands there are. Close to, just like 180 acres of exception lands. We have looked at things like, where's that dang school boundary and where's the fire district boundary? All of those things are known quantities that are easy to see and easy to say, okay, well, there's that and there's that. But no, we have not identified soil suitability, um, anything to that nature.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't gone through what the state would call a locational analysis by any means to determine the exact space you'd be looking at. I think generally, there's some anecdotal references that everybody kind of knows. There's a lot of floodplain to the west. So that's going to be kind of out of the picture.
But not all.
But not all. There is, there is some possibilities there. Um, and then you have to kind of look at the existing transportation, the existing services that are there. And so generally speaking, we'd be looking to the north. I mean, that's kind of where you gotta look mostly.
I think, you know, it's, it's, as we've talked about this, one of the considerations is low-income housing, right? Regardless of which way we go, we're still going to be rent burdened. Because if we stay with where we're at and we start to do density, it's going to create areas where I believe it's going to be even harder for folks to be able to afford to live in those same areas. Um, even in the, even in the revitalization discussion, right? We start to create those nodes. Chances are, it's going to be difficult for them to live above where they work. Uh, if we expand and you increase SDCs, then you start talking about displacing people just simply because of the fact that they cannot afford to live in the homes that they'd want to live in in those expansion areas. Um, and once you start increasing SCC dollars to sort of pay for all that stuff, you disincentivize, and especially if you're talking tenfold, right? I mean, you're, you're talking a huge increase, um, which is problematic and you see areas um that are extremely land burdened like Portland, where it's thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars before you ever stick a shovel in the ground. Um, and so that makes it very challenging. Um, on the other hand, if we don't think, if, if, if we say, well, this is good enough for now, um, and we don't start to put into play a discussion about a divorce and we kick the can down the road and it's a 10-year process, then we're looking at 20 years before we're ever really beginning to start having a conversation about what the destiny of our city is going to look like. And I think that's a little bit problematic. I mean, um, if you don't start thinking about it, a 10-year process now, you're talking 20 years or, or more to, to start looking at that. You know, I think that we need to be sensitive to Kaiser's identity in terms of the single school and a lot of the things that make Kaiser what it is. But it's, it's a, it's a tough consideration because if we stay with the current growth pattern we have, our only option essentially is density. Um, which is going to fundamentally change a lot of things in our city anyways. You know, start packing people on top of people, you know, one, Commissioner Watson's concerns was, you know, parking, you know, three miles away from your house just to get home because of on-street parking and everything. So I just, you know, the, the, the options presented to us now are fairly simple in nature, but I think that, you know, we have the responsibility to actually think about what you brought up in, in that 10, 20-year from now commission and, you know, did, are, are we making the right move now to start planning? I mean, we're not implementing anything right now, but planning for what we would need in that 20-year span. Do we currently, like right now, we want to pull the trigger on a divorce and have it happen tomorrow? No, that's, I think it's totally unfeasible. Both from the fiscal aspect, but from, um, you know, we're just simply not ready to do it. It's going to take 20, 30 years to get the infrastructure and the funds put in place to be able to do those kinds of things. But if, I think if we keep kicking the can down the road, we're going to get to a point of bursting at the seams. And not be able to accommodate the, the growth of housing, which the state tells us we have to do, unless we start, you know, going up, 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 or um, we don't have the opportunities for jobs, which I know is a separate process. But again, if it's tied to a certain degree with what Salem is, then we're stuck anyways. I know that's kind of a, there's not a lot of substance there. I think it's just, it's more of, you know, anyways.
And just Matt, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry. And being a person that is prone to exaggerate, I appreciate that, but the reality is, it wouldn't be a 10-year process to get it, to get into UGB expansion. It, they, the report identifies it takes about two years. After, after the divorce, it would take about two years. The divorce itself, you know, depending on the.
Seven to 10 years to see stuff get built out there, is what they said.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not a, it's not a, you're putting the decision off for 10 years, but it, they're, you're right. It is, it's not an immediate process. It's not a, oh, let's get a divorce and let's do a UGB expansion and we're going to be, start building. That's very true.
But it could be if we just went the option two route, is what I'm saying. If we just, if we just said, we're really comfortable with the option two route, you're not going through another um BLI HNA for a good bit, right? So, you know, yes, it is maybe 10 to 20 years depending.
So um, I think, and I don't know if I'm getting into, into discussion area rather than just the, I don't know what section of the hearing we're in right now. But I, I feel like the examining option one and option two, just taking them to their logical conclusions really kind of makes it a, an easier decision for me than I thought it would be. Knowing that I'm not, I don't, I'm not totally satisfied with either of these options. But option one, jump off the cliff, spend a whole lot of money that we don't have. Option two, get creative, meet our needs with what we have. We're not going to be able to try that trick more than, more than once or twice. I mean, there's only so many times we can say we have enough room. So it's not like we're gonna have this option again in 10 years where we can kick the can again, again, again. I feel like 10, 15 years from now, we're going to be facing the, the likelihood of a divorce. And if we go with option two, we can go with option two with the intention to examine the, the code changes and proposals for uh, for building revenue that come to us over the next year, two years. And we can consider those with an eye towards that long-term. And I know projections really break apart the further away you get. I mean, a three, four-year projection, you're, you're just crossing your fingers and flipping a coin at that point. But if we, if we have some intentionality towards that, I think it's better than, it's, it's certainly to me easier to say number two and let's get to work than it is to say number one and Godspeed to the city council trying to figure out how to, how to, you know, sell this.
So you're actually saying option three.
The consideration of option one and option two?
Well, I mean, if I'm reading option three, it says.
A combination.
It's a combination, but it's specifically structured with one that would essentially give them the latitude to pursue that discussion of the divorce, maybe not immediately, but down the road.
Yes, but with it being down the road, I think we're already going to be seeing the things come to us that'll start to form what that option one is going to eventually start looking like. I think I'm saying that I look at option one as a bit of an inevitability, so saying option three is kind of redundant if we're choosing option two.
So what does couples counseling look like?
You mean instead of the divorce?
Instead of the divorce, what does couples counseling look like?
So I think that's all the hard, that's the hard reality. You know, I think there is a, and Nate, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's sort of a, a concept out there that Kaiser doesn't get to control their own destiny because Salem controls our destiny. But really in the world of the UGB in the state of Oregon, that's really not the truth. The, the truth is, is that there's a regional boundary drawn, this is where people live, this is where people work. And there's math that goes along with it and it demonstrates where people live and people work. Census numbers kind of show us that. And then there's an imaginary line drawn down Shangri-La and over by Stark and on, what's the other side of the street? I don't know what street it runs down. Anyway, that separates us from Salem. But overall, we all function as one big community when it comes to the job base and the housing base. And so I think the, the hard part is, is that with the couples counseling is Salem going through their process, their, our Salem process they're going through right now, which is a big comp plan update. They've identified what their goals are and what they're wanting to do. They're, they're going through a big, long, multi-year process. And essentially, when they got an updated Housing Needs Analysis in 2015, 16? Something like that. It was a couple of years back. Their data shows that they believe they have enough capacity within their portion of the UGB, so south of our portion of the UGB. They believe there's enough capacity within that UGB to accommodate all of the projected growth for the region. And since there is, and I, and I know there's been talk about, yeah, but some of that land is really hard to serve because it's steep slopes and it's this and it's that. But from the couples counseling perspective, I think the issue is, is that the state rules don't really support the ability for us to expand when there's already land available that could serve it. So.
We actually asked that question of how to, how to navigate this. We met with our DLCD rep and her supervisor. And basically they said, honestly, you guys are in the stronger position. You can evaluate what it is you can accomplish and then you can say, this is what we can accomplish. We've done what we can do. Have a nice day. So, I mean, I, we don't, in, in counseling, we don't have to bring the acrimony. And we wouldn't, but we are in the stronger position in saying, this is what our destiny is, this is what our goals and objectives are, this is what we are going to pursue, if that is the choice that is made. Now.
Now, it, and it's sort of tough because I think there is a reality that there may be some pressure to say, hey, Kaiser, you gotta carry your weight and provide adequate multifamily housing stuff. You gotta provide adequate different housing stocks. But one thing with what Nate is saying is it kind of speaks back to both Jeff and Matt, what you guys have kind of alluded to. It sort of is a strategy to be able to say, well, like, maybe we don't have to densify to the ultimate level. You know, that is something that is like, okay, we've made plans. We've said that we're going to increase some density in this RCOD corridor. We're going to be adding some availabilities, because House Bill 2001 is going to require us to in another year and a half to say, hey, we're going to allow duplexes everywhere. And so these numbers, because these numbers that they did for us that came up with 400 acres, or how many was it, 479? Whatever it was, not quite 500 acres, was based on seeing the kind of current development pattern we have right now moving forward in the next 20 years. So, and densifying slightly, moving towards a middle housing product some, but not changing assumptions greatly. So, I mean, there is an argument to be made, okay, well, we've made these adjustments, and this is what we can accommodate, which means the rest of it has to be accommodated elsewhere.
So when I say have a nice day, the reality is that we will do our part and we will be responsible, as we have always been. And where there are opportunities for us to create additional housing opportunities within our share of the UGB, I think absolutely we will pursue it. And that's not going to be easy, and it's going to be painful for the sitting council. So it's not just sweetness and light. There are challenges ahead of us. But honestly, the position that Kaiser is in is the stronger position.
Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Chair. When we are, with a joint UGB working together, we essentially get credit for, so to speak, as a city. Salem can have, for example, their industrial complex that they're developing out there in Mill Creek. Great land. We don't have something like that, obviously, that large. So that all kinds of offsets and everything. And affordable housing, we get some money, like for the Fed. Don't we provide that to the Salem Housing Authority to work at our behalf and all that kind of stuff? So they're doing the affordable housing thing. Do we get credit for that? If they're going to treat us as an urban growth boundary as basically one metropolitan or regional thing, do we get credit for the things that Salem does really well? Like their housing authority, they do very well at that. We don't have that program?
I will say we will take credit. I mean, but it's pretty small. That is just a fraction of really the need as far as affordable housing.
Whatever affordable housing is.
However we define it.
It's not clear in my mind what it is.
It's a good, yeah, there's more affordable housing, I think, is what I like to say. Affordable housing is simply subsidized. There has to be outside resources. And those of you who are involved in the development process, you know what those costs are. You know that you just don't build houses that all of a sudden are half as cheap as the developer that built down the road, because housing costs are what they are. So affordable housing, by definition, depending on what definition you're using, is requiring outside resources. And the home funds that we get, part of the C, Community Development Block Grant process, is one layer of things that we do, and we will claim credit. But it's not like there's a score sheet specifically that I have to fill out every week. So, yeah, we're getting credit.
Okay. So it sounds like we've had some discussion about where folks are kind of going in terms of the options one, two, and three. I don't necessarily know that, I'm particularly hearing consensus. Is there, where do we want to go?
I've started consensus with Commissioner Watson.
Yeah, we can just take the temperature real fast. So, so not taking a formal vote, but in support of option-two, we've got Juan, Kellyer. I'm not sure if you guys have come to an opinion yet or if you need more information.
Two looking for one, that's kind of what I heard you tell me.
Two on the way to one, yeah.
Again, that's, to me, I mean, is two looking to one feasible or do you agree three? I guess is my question.
Does it make a difference to you? I mean, will it change what you do if we say go three or two, but we really like one? Like, what does that, what does that do to your workload and your?
I just.
No, see, yes.
I mean, you put three for a reason. I get it, I get it.
Yeah, I think the big thing is, is that if, I would say that, you know, the CAC said two. If you guys said, CAC is totally wrong, totally off-base, we want to go one. You guys need to go and initiate a divorce immediately. That's what we feel really strongly about. We communicate that onto the council, and the council feels really strongly about it. Hey, that's easy. We know what we're doing then. We know what I'm going to be spending the rest of my career here doing.
What I was, what I was hearing was two, but look for opportunities for one over the next 10 to 20 years.
But that's more on us and our long-term planning and strategy and how we want to build consensus. I don't think that's necessarily on you guys.
So I hear them differently. Matt, to your question, is there a difference between three and two looking for one? To me, three is start work immediately on the process to establish a moderate expansion.
That answers the question.
And what Bob Parker told us, that's basically all the pain and suffering of one with only.
Less results.
With no rewards. Moderate results. But that's, you know, that's way oversimplification, because I think the reason you had number-three option is because I insisted that we'd look at that through the study process. What happens if we only do just a little bit of expansion? And that's why it's on the list.
We get just a little divorced?
Well, but I think my thought is, though, if you get in couples' counseling and there is the opportunity to look at some of those exception lands, now granted, this isn't a formal motion or anything like that. So even if we did, as the planning commission, we did nod our heads and everybody says, yes, they like one option or another, you could still pursue that option of going towards the exceptions' lands, this discussion notwithstanding. Is that correct?
Could you say that again?
So.
But differently?
Where you said, Sam, we're more gooder. So you said, can we just have a little bit of land? Which triggered my thought, which was, we have 479 acres of need in Kaiser, correct? So we have 180-ish acres of exceptions' land. And so the discussion could be a little bit of an expansion. So we hold two pretty firm, you said, yeah, we kind of agree with what they're saying at the CAC. But with a little bit of option-one, saying if there's that opportunity to go after some of those exception lands and figure out a path to do that. I mean, I think there's wisdom in that, right? So they're not, we're not totally handcuffed. Because one of the things that we did hear from, I don't remember which study it was, that we still have a requirement to go after some of those higher-income, higher-valued homes. So.
Oh, absolutely. Our two biggest needs are the higher income and the lower income, based on the study.
And so the difference is, what Bob told us, based on our request to tell us what that would look like, we would have to do the divorce either amicably or legislatively. We would have to do all of the study that would be necessary to do that. And yes, I don't believe the full cost would be the same, but it's still going to be a significant process and cost to the city. That was his return to us on option-three. And the reality is, those exception lands, it's going to be highly contested. The reason those exception lands exist is because people do not want to live in the city. They want their acreage lots, I think, two to five acres. And they're not going to, they're going to oppose anything that would threaten what they have built and strived really hard to accomplish. So it will be contentious.
So it's, Commissioner Whelan?
So, let me finish. What I heard two looking for three means, that go with.
Two looking for one.
Two looking for one, sorry. Is that, meaning, let's not get those, let's not, let's densify, let's use our existing, our shared UGB to, what, to accomplish the goals that we identify, but keep our eye on the supply and the other issues that are in play. We don't know what the end result of Kaiser's comprehensive plan changed. I heard this, this is a dot exercise that I've never seen before. It's a, everybody's going to get dots, and they're going to represent the different housing types that they get. And each dot is going to represent 20 acres. And for housing, that's going to equate to 50 housing units. For apartments or high-density, it's going to equate to whatever units. And so when they have people place those dots on the map, it's going to be like a little mini SimCity exercise of, we're going to build up here. And they're going to do it with 20-acre chunks at a time. But they, I did ask, and they're going to be able to cut those into four pieces if they choose.
And none of them are going to be in their own backyard. Of who's putting the dots on, it won't be in their backyard.
Well, exactly. But the reality is, what I'm trying to put forward here, it's a major effort that they're doing. And they're undertaking it right now. I think this exercise is going to be on this next month sometime. I think early in the month, the 12th of November, something like that.
So how do you put, how do you put a dot on a two-dimensional paper that's vertical to represent the vertical land they're trying to develop?
I did not get into that.
Commissioner Whelan, what do you got?
I'm good.
So, you know, as I'm sitting here thinking about all this, two, one, three, I think regardless of what we do, we're going to be kind of stuck with two regardless because of House Bill 2001, and we're going to have to accomplish all of that probably before we ever get into a position of any land grab or anything like that. Excuse me, urban growth boundary expansion.
Well, we're good.
We don't know, because we haven't seen the rulemaking and stuff like that. But I imagine there's going to be a lot that comes out of that that would have to be accomplished first and foremost before any additional conversation about an expansion would even be put on the table.
Yeah, I'm assuming that the whole timeframe for getting an updated study after things get implemented, that'll be one of the things that we would have to do, is we'd have to re-look at the buildable land supply. Because, and that is one of the things that clearly, frankly, even with the revitalization adoption, you re-look at the buildable land supply. And that may shift when you're looking at the demographics of what our buildable lands inventory and the housing needs that are listed in this study say, hey, income brackets here are our people that are living in Kaiser right now. Percentage-wise, you've got a bunch of people that are in the higher-income brackets that need the more expensive housing. And then you've got a bunch of people that are not in the higher-income bracket that need more affordable housing. And so it may be that you re-look at the overall picture and go, oh, well, with this revitalization plan, we see that some vertical housing may be able to be built. They may be a little bit more expensive. Maybe that serves some of the need that was identified. Because frankly, the acreage, it gets put into, you know, it's math. But they say we need this many dwelling units. And with a single-family large lot development, we don't have large lot development. But single-family large lot 5,000-square-foot development in Kaiser is going to eat up way more space than vertical condos that are expensive. And so those numbers could shift, and the overall need of land realistically should go down and be a little easier to accommodate, which again, may not hamstring us quite as much feeling that we have to completely densify everything. So, but yeah, I think ultimately, we'll be doing another housing needs analysis and build a lands inventory post.
Commissioner Whelan?
Thank you. I think what we're charged with here, challenged with here, is what kind of direction we're going to give to council. The numbers, you know, PSU is going to give us Kaiser-specific numbers, House Bill 2001, I believe, is the right acronym. That's going to change things. But they're not going to be dramatic swings in people or buildings. So what we have to try to decide here is, regardless of what final numbers we're working with, is philosophically, what is our recommendation to council? So that they have some input. Because the minutia of the numbers or the acres is always going to be moving around. But what is Kaiser going to be? That's our charge. And that's probably one or two.
So far, we've heard from a few folks that choose the preferred path. Haven't heard anything from Commissioner Grents or Commissioner Haas or you, Commissioner Whelan.
Well, if I can come full circle on this marriage analysis. So it sounds like option-one is a divorce with alimony and child support. Option-two is couples' counseling, maybe, maybe some time apart.
Stay together for the kids' option, I think.
Right, and option-three is a formal separation, but you're still paying the bills. Neither one of those options really are very tenable. If there's, when I was at the CAC meeting, the last one where they made the vote, I was hoping that option-three had some more incremental steps. It doesn't sound like there really are any. So, I mean, short of that, I don't, I don't know that we really have much of, much of an option. We don't have the money for the divorce. We haven't saved up for a lawyer yet, let alone the apartment to move out.
So does that mean that you're moving towards number-two? Because two's not, because one may not be realistic and attainable?
If I might, sorry, I don't want to interrupt. One of the things that maybe you might want to consider is perhaps option-two with some benchmarks as to, okay, we are going to keep our eye on it, and we are going to monitor what the outcome, for example, of Salem's reconstituted comprehensive plan is going to be, what they estimate to be their future land supply, and if there are some better bar metrics that come out of that, figuring out, okay, what's their timeline going to look like? Perhaps option-two with some benchmarks may, because I understand the issue of, you can't just say, we're going to kick it down the road. We're going to let the future commission have to struggle with it and deal with it. That feels, that just feels disingenuous or feels like we're not shouldering the responsibility. But perhaps there is an opportunity to say, let's adopt option-two with these benchmarks. And I just throw that out there for your consideration. Listening to your discussion and listening to what you're describing as what we're talking about. I do love the marriage analysis.
You started it.
That's why I love it.
When I was in the service, somebody would say, First Sergeant wants to talk with you.
Oh, God, no.
And as you're walking by, your coworker would say, RHP. Frank has his privileges.
That's right.
So. I am of the mindset of wearing many hats, in that obviously I stepped up. And as you well know, some of my education, some of my experience, some of you may not. And I think that once we look at maximizing our land, then I think it would be an easier sell to Joe Citizen saying, this is what we've done between this point and these benchmarks, as you said, Nate. And this is why we did it, and this is where we did it. And then the heights and all those, the thousand or 4,000 square feet that we got, we can maximize in condos. Okay, that would be an easier sell to move into the next phase, and that would be the urban growth boundary. Now, with that being said, I think, I look at, I like to look across the fence and see what's there, just because it's my neighbor. And some people will not like this because they're of the mindset of one house, one family, one lot, that equals suburb. That equals suburbs. Okay. And so that equals cars. And people have grown to like that. That's independence. That's what America's built upon. Put your boots on and let's go, independence. And so what we're doing is we're making a team effort for the city of Kaiser. And how we're going to look. And so I am of the, of the mindset of doing infill first. And then looking to use the urban grass boundary. Given that we have to, we have other eyes on us, the state, with implementing housing, our goal 10, which is housing. Okay. We don't want to be outside of those parameters like Lake Oswego is. And say, the state is looking at you to take you over because you are incapable of doing that. That's very extreme. And so my thinking is, based upon what I know, I would say option two.
Commissioner Whelan.
I kind of like what Jeremy and Nate kind of co-authored here with two with some benchmarks. Might delay the process of getting something to council for another meeting or two. But I think we need to do more than just two. Because we cannot deny the fact that there's going to be a need. And we can't always rely on the other guy to do it for us. Especially if we want to be responsible or thinking that we're doing the best for our community means we're really doing this for our community. Whether it's be five years from now or 50 years from now. So maybe the benchmark idea, if there's some way to incorporate that. And maybe staff could come back in one or two months with some recommendations of benchmarks. That, I think that would get us to a point where we can move forward.
Shane's already asking me, what does that mean?
Is there, is there harm in letting council know that we've decided that we're going to meet the housing needs within the current urban growth boundary? And so give them two. I, I, I just don't see that there would be a need to say, let's hold off on telling the council. We've decided with two. We can say, heads up, council, this is what the planning commission recommends. And we can recommend it by consensus too. But we would also request that staff come back with some proposed benchmarks for us to consider. I, I just feel like we can do that, but we can do it separately.
You know, and, you know, part of that is process and procedure, which I'm not going to get hung up on. But I don't think there's an urgency. There's not like, the council's not waiting for this because they have a deadline of November 12th or whatever it might be. So maybe if we made a more complete recommendation or just stay with two would say there's more to come. You know, I'm good either way, but I just think that Jeremy and Nate came up with some good input.
Well, I'm not going, going to take any credit for that. That was, that was Nate. But I mean, I, I am definitely interested in knowing what kinds of benchmarks you're talking about and how measurable they're going to be and how realistic they might be. And Shane, I, I know that's going to be you doing all that work.
Yeah, I already, I already asked him what that meant. Well, I mean, for what, for what it's worked, I would say, I really appreciate you guys considering this and talking about it and trying to talk it through and be reasonable. Um, and I just want to make sure, and from what I'm hearing, I'm not hearing anybody that is heck bent on, let's just go get the divorce right now, go to divorce court and move forward. I'm hearing a little bit more of the, hey, let's be responsible. Let's plan for growth, but let's definitely keep our options open. And that, I mean, generally that's kind of what I'm hearing.
Eh, it's not so bad right now.
And honestly, that's, I mean, to me, that's, that's helpful to me to know as we're moved forward into this next year and different things are coming our way and how we're going to implement different code changes and what code changes we might put before you in this next year. That, that is at least helpful in some of our day-to-day operations. And I mean, I think that one thing, just off the top of my head, one of the benchmarks, and it's going to be hard to quantify. But with the, the new adoption of the RCOD zone for the River Cherry Overlay District, allowing some more flexibility for middle housing and additional densities on residentially zoned lands. Not just the commercial element, but I'm talking more of the residential piece. I think time will tell is if the market's there and the desire is there to see those housing options built. And we'll, we'll have some data maybe in the next few years as things start to get built to see what kind of density truly can get achieved and what it does to that neighborhood fabric. Of course, it's hard because we can, we could plan for it all we want and paint maps, pretty pictures. But as Jeremy well knows, that doesn't get a project built. You know, it's, it's about return on investment and it's about having the financing and the banks in line and the builders ready to go and, uh, lending resources and all, everything else.
That, that kind of, that, that sounds to me very much like what, what Commissioner Watson brought up. And that's two looking to one, which is sort of that benchmark. I mean, if we get to the point in the, uh, River Cherry Overlay District where we know that it's either A, working or B, not, then you can start to kind of trigger that next piece. So that maybe is one of the benchmarks. That's the only thing that I'm hearing. Nate, it was your brilliant idea. What are the other ones?
Well, monitoring the efforts in Salem and making sure that they, um, actually, the product that they come up with, that we incorporate and that we evaluate, they're, they're going to have a projection on what their land supply is going to be doing. And, um, so I think that is something. I think Shane indicated that have some history as to what kind of density is going to be created in, for example, the RCOD with some significant, well, some increased, take off the word significant, but an increase in density potential. Part of what I'm struggling with here with this last question is, do we come back after a couple of months to you and say, here's what the benchmarks would be? What I think I would like to propose, and I think I better scoot further away from Shane, is, um, move forward with a recommendation on one of, on if you choose option two. Because I'm, I have a mind in mind that I, we still need to come up with an action plan of how we're going to address the deficits. And so we, we need to be working on that as well. And I think in that action plan, we could identify those benchmarks. And under, if your direction is to develop the action plan with the effort to, how are we going to proceed if we adopt, um, option two? How are we going to proceed with the unfolding of the story from there? In other words, options, when do we come back? When do we reevaluate? And have that be part of that action plan. I think that would be my request of you. So that we can get started on that step. So I can go to council. And that's, that's going to be a couple of months. And we can certainly bring those efforts back to you and say, do these benchmarks meet the kinds of things you were hoping to see? You know, we are fast approaching the end of the year and the holidays are upon us. Ah, all of this crazy stuff. So the ti- the clock is ticking and I just, I just don't want to, I just don't want to unplug two more months out of the process of developing that action plan.
Commissioner Watson.
Then I'd like to make a motion. I motion.
Do we need a motion on this since we're not? So I don't need to interrupt, but I don't, I don't think we need a formal motion on this, correct?
Well, a motion doesn't hurt.
Okay. Cause I, I, as I understood, we were doing by consensus generally, but that's each individual, um, strategic piece. So ultimately his motion would accompany all of the strategic discussion we've had to this point, correct?
I believe we have consensus on, on moving forward with the other.
Yeah, with the other stuff, right. But what I'm saying is a, a motion for recommendation would be consistent of all.
Yeah, but you've already taken action on those others.
Did we take action?
So you don't, yeah, you adopted a recommendation for those others.
As I was.
It was, it was during that time, that dark time.
Last month, yesterday. So as I was, Commissioner Watson.
Well, then I'll move forward with our recommendation that the commission, uh, adopt option two, uh, recommend option two and request staff to come with us a couple of months from now. Couple, three, four, two, however many months, uh, Shane can manage from now. It's a long motion, uh, with an action plan for moving forward with benchmarks.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion, uh, from Commissioner Watson to go with option two and ask staff to develop a plan to address the benchmarks at a future date. As part of the action plan and a second by Commissioner Callier. Any additional discussion on this? Commissioner Grinns.
When does the RCOD become effective?
Depends what council does, but it's, it's on for council adoption of the ordinance at their next meeting. It'll be 30 days after that.
So roughly December?
Yeah, it's 10/21 is the next meeting.
Yeah, 10/21, so yeah. We'll celebrate it on Thanksgiving.
That'd be the earliest. That'll, that'll be the earliest, Jeremy.
Okay.
There's some pretty robust findings that have to be vetted through that process. I just said, what? It's coming to the next meeting? I thought we might have a little more time than that. There's, I mean, there are, there are significant findings that have to be written. A lot of them are in a draft form right now, but I know there's been, there's already been much discussion with the legal department and I, so.
Roughly December is fine.
I can't type right now, guys.
Voice to text.
Dragon, get Dragon.
Yeah.
All right. Any, uh, any further discussion on this? No? All right. Uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Most and passes unanimously. Thanks, Gary. You should have done this one. Um, kidding.
You're doing a great job.
Um, good, good work on this. I mean, it's, it's a heavy lift and, um.
So I got four more things to do.
I know, I know. So we have, uh, new old business, anything, uh, from us? No? Let's go to the staff report.
I think you heard it all already. Just one other thing. So we have actually met with the developers, and I told this to council. Of the lot that is next to Sonic Drive-In, you may not know, but there were additional lots that were created there. And they are actually pursuing, developing plans as we speak to actually construct, um, uh, mixed use development with offices below and residences above. It's going to be very small. There'll be four units. Is there more than that? I don't know. I was so excited, I, I kind of got. Anyway, it's actually true mixed use. I'm not sure of the details yet. I haven't submitted the application. I think it's eight. Yeah, yeah.
There's no application? It doesn't exist.
I know, but I got so excited. Anyway, so that's, uh, and you already heard everything else we're doing. The, the RFQ for the study is hopefully going to be very soon. Shouldn't promise a date. And that's going to start in earnest quickly. The RCOD is, council approved it and directed the ordinance, so. A lot of good things happening in this city.
All right. Uh, Councilman Freeman.
Thank you, Chair. Well, we heard the ordinance and I guess, uh, I just want to give the commission kudos for all your work. But also, um, really I think the reason I went back was just some clarifying of words, which are really important, especially when you talk about 10 years from now or tomorrow. Right? Because everyone had, uh, a couple of things had some different, excuse me, feelings of those words. So really it was more wordsmithing and clarifying and in my world, that's really important. So, um, I think that's good. Uh, I drove past the skate park tonight and it's open. And if you head out that way, be really careful. There was like kids everywhere. Awesome to see. Uh, but the big toy is still closed for a little while longer, so. They're going up? The poles are in? Okay, good. Cause my grandson's having a fit because he can't go to the park. So, you know.
We have 18 others.
This is personal. It is. He can see the park, but he can't go in. And so he's really having, he's not quite believing grandma that the park is closed. So, uh, tomorrow night is West Kaiser. And again, all the neighborhood associations have, uh, started back up in September. Uh, next month, November 13th, uh, Council Elizabeth Smith will be here in my place. Cause I have a conflicting, another city meeting, like the only night we could do it was planning commission night. So she will be here in my place. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. So we have Council Representative, Commissioner Hustler, you're up on the 14th of October. Um, I might suggest seeing if you can find somebody to wingman with you. Um, it's one of those things, uh, I think you'd probably do just fine, but, um, if you've never experienced it, for the most part, you're going through the minutes and stuff like that, but, um, if nobody, it says the 14th.
I know, but that's a, that's this Monday and that's not true. So it would be the 21st is the next council meeting.
April fools in October. So October 21st, uh, which is the next city council meeting. So, um, if nobody volunteers to want to go with you and you want somebody to go with you, give me a call. I'll go with you. So, uh, are you available to do that the 21st though?
Hi.
All right. Sounds good. Any, uh, and I guess in my excitement of getting this gavel and also pure terr- terrifying, welcome, uh, to both of you. Um, I know we kind of clapped and said congratulations, but, um, it's great to have you on board. Uh, I think you're both bringing, um, really good perspectives and much needed, uh, ideas, uh, moving forward. So congratulations and, and welcome and, um, you got through the second half of a big project. Um, and I'm sure that Nate's and Nate and Shane are planning on keeping us more in. Shane, a day away from surgery, man. Good job. Glad to have you here. That's right. Anything else? All right. Let's stand adjourned at 7:51.